I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic, for which it stands, one nation, united, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Anyone I said we'd have updates, we're gonna skip that. So, we, this is a work session, and today we'll be talking about assessment, and in particular, we'll also hear about AmesWeb in more detail, which we've been interested to learn about. So with that, I am excited to turn it over to Dr. Harrison and Dr. Core.
Oh, is it already?
Yeah, yeah, we are.
I know, caught us all by surprise.
Yeah.
And, yes.
So I'll just continue to pass to Dr. Core, but the thought I want to certainly acknowledge our administrative colleagues for being here this evening.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. You know, Reyna and the team have repeatedly spoken of our work in curriculum development, unit development, and different components of instruction. And tonight is that opportunity to dig in a little bit deeper and to have a learning session on assessment. So with that said, Dr. Core, the floor is yours.
Okay. So the floor is mine. I want to have one no matter which way I go. Okay. So the floor is mine, and also you'll hear as we go through the night some of the comments and sharing of information from my colleagues in the audience. It's nice to see a few other people showed up though too, because it really was such an intimate group, just being us. So, so tonight, we're gonna take a look at assessment in Irvington. And I think you've, in the past, we've had a performance report that really was met with a lot of frustration. We would put up a lot of charts and information about how we performed on the state assessments. And as much as that is one measure, the reality is that most assessment is done all year long, and that those assessments are really just a moment in time. And in the past three days, coming up this year for the state assessments, they are reduced to two days. So tonight, we're gonna talk less about the state assessments, and we're gonna talk more about the kind of assessments that we have, or the kind of assessment that we do here in Irvington. As educators, it's always a challenge when we try and present this information, because very often, we're presenting to whether it be a board of education, as well as our community, that doesn't have the same background knowledge that we have. And therefore, we sometimes make assumptions about what people know or don't know. So tonight, we're going to include some background information on assessment that might help to create a foundation that will serve us not only for tonight, but as we move forward, and whether it be throughout this year in presentations, as well as moving ahead. So, in looking at assessment, our goal tonight is to deepen the board of education, the community's understanding of the various types of assessment, how assessment informs instruction, and how we're starting to build our data sets in district that will inform many aspects of the day-to-day of school. Earlier in the year, we did our goals presentation, and we shared with you our working draft of our goals around assessment in Irvington. And this was a draft that was developed with the administrators, this team, and Dave, oh, and David. When this year, we set out in our summer work to say, what are the real goals for us moving forward? And clearly, we are in stage two. So as a reminder, the Understanding by Design framework that we use for instructional design has three areas: stage one, stage two, and stage three. Stage one is the instructional design. Stage two is assessment. And stage three is the learning plan. So if I know this is what I want to teach, and I know this is how I'm going to assess, what am I going to be doing in the classroom with students? How will they be grouped? What will be my instructional plan in the class, the lesson plan? So, over the summer, we had to make sure that we had a common understanding of when we talk about assessment, are we talking about the same thing? So we spent time this summer really just working through our own understandings about assessment, and defining some of those expectations. And so this is just our working draft of a definition that we keep in mind as we're doing our building level work, as well as district planning for assessment. It felt like there was value in defining assessments and the purpose of assessments. And the major focus for assessment is really about the student. So as much as I think many times our students, or the children, our children in schools feel that the assessment is about what grade am I getting, what score am I getting, that's actually not how we see assessment. We see assessment as feedback for learning, feedback that can support a child or a student as they continue on their journey of learning. So effective assessments give students feedback on how well they understand information, as well as areas for improvement, while also informing a teacher's planning and instructional design. So in a little while, I'm gonna share with you a little bit of a definition around formative and summative, and we'll return to that whole idea. Assessment becomes more, even more relevant when students become involved in their own assessment. So the focus on self-assessment, self-reflection, is very powerful. It actually, very often, the self-reflection component is one that our students feel the least, or the most reluctant to actually engage in. Part of that is that from a very early age, we actually guide students on how to do school. And one of the ways that we do school, especially when we get to the secondary level, is we give a lot of information. And so when we now ask our students to step back and reflect and take time, that is not something that they've necessarily been raised to do in our system. And I'm gonna talk of that, talk to you a little bit about that tonight through summative assessment. And the whole idea of when we give a summative assessment, how that creates an end, that for students feels like I'm ready to move on. So part of talking about assessment tonight is really understanding all of the entry points, and really understanding how students come to believe assessment works. So, I'm hoping that you're going to find this actually helpful and a little bit interesting. So we're gonna watch a video, it's about eight minutes, it's Lynda Darling-Hammond, who some of you might be. I wonder, do you think that's gonna, think the martini, that's not so good? If I do that?
No, I think you'll see it fine. I think I should make it easier for you.
You think it's easier, martini?
Alternately, we can also just have a link to this video.
He said it's fine.
No, no. I'm saying, I'm saying after the fact.
Honor off martini.
This is the second in a row where we've done the dramatic lighting, I hope you like it.
The United States is at a moment where it could really transform its assessment systems. Most of our testing is multiple choice tests, pick one answer out of five, which is something you will never do in applying knowledge in the real world. Our assessments need to evolve, to reflect the skills and knowledge that we actually value, and that we need schools to teach and our students to learn. Human beings are naturally learners. We are learning every moment of every day. In school, we have particular things to learn, and we know that students learn more effectively when we're clear about what the goals are.
I kind of like, I want like a goal in my head, like, about like what to do with the information that I get. So if they're gonna teach me how to do a one-page equation, I wanna know what can I do with that?
I look at the beginning of the year, and I say, what are the big ideas that I want students to know in the whole year, and what are the major skills I want them to be able to do? And then I backwards map those skills and ideas into little chunks. I try to have a really clear learning outcome every day that's measurable, so at the end of class, students can say, this is how close I got to meeting the outcome for the day. Use the language emerging, developing, proficient, or advanced. Now if they know where they are on that rubric, then I don't have to own that for every student. And I think that's really powerful.
Assessment should occur early and often, and throughout the process.
I do a lot of formative assessments. So formative assessments, meaning it's not summative, it's not a test at the end of the week or the end of a unit. You're doing a lot of small check-ins with the students to see where they're at, and to see that they're growing along.
How do you know that?
Because I read it in the Saturn.
On the Saturn Beck, so you're making a connection. From text to text. Very good.
They are being steered very gently and very strategically, and the formative assessment gathering process is essential to that. You really have to know what kids know and don't know.
In a lot of cases, we give students written feedback on the paper that they've written, but then we move on to the next thing, and we don't give them the opportunity to actually rewrite that paper. And the research evidence is extremely clear, that one of the strongest positive influences on achievement occurs when students get formative feedback that they immediately can apply.
I think that's one of the things that the kids don't really like, is doing their reflecting. But I think it's actually one of the things that helps us a lot. I think doing it kind of like helps you see the bigger picture. Because I don't think that if I didn't do reflecting, I wouldn't really think about like what I'm struggling with, or I would just kind of want to move on.
Summative assessment just simply means an assessment from which we can draw judgment about whether somebody has, at that moment, learned. A false distinction has cropped up in the United States, which seems to suggest that it's okay for external summative assessments to just be multiple choice tests. In other countries, summative assessments that occur periodically are essays, and oral examinations, and project-based assessments, so that what you're able to see about what students can do reflects more of what you actually want them to be able to do in the world beyond school.
So tonight is exhibit night. Every nine weeks, we have this big celebration of learning, and the halls will be filled with parents and children, who are all here to celebrate what their children have accomplished in the past nine weeks. We also use exhibits to assess the learning of our students. I like to go up to students and have them explain an exhibit to me, so that I understand if they get the big idea. You know, did they just do a project? Or do they really understand what they did, why they did it, and what it means in terms of the bigger picture? What we find is that because the learning is so rich, and it's so meaningful, that our students do very well on standardized tests.
Many schools that I've worked with have graduation portfolios, where students have to complete projects. They often need to collaborate with others effectively, as part of the work that they're going to present. They need to communicate in multiple forms. They need to be critical and creative problem solvers, because they're gonna run into barriers and obstacles, and they have to solve them in order to complete this major project. So the blend of the cognitive and the non-cognitive skills that result often in them defending their work to a panel of outside evaluators, really prepares them for the range of abilities they're going to need to have when they leave the boundaries of school. And I think it's possible to value these non-cognitive skills throughout school, in the same way we value the academic skills.
We try to bring in people from the community to watch or judge their presentations, and then just do things that's like, in your life, in a job, you might have to make a presentation to your boss about why your proposal should work.
So 91% of the people I surveyed said that $15 for one unit is a perfect price for them.
Really nicely done, good presentation, and I really liked your product.
So trying to model assessment after real-life experiences, I think is really important. No one in their job, I don't think, has to bubble in a standardized test. Having 130 students means it's really easy to have no idea if your students are learning anything, because there's so many of them. And that's when, in the last couple of years, I've realized, the more that I can get them to take ownership of their learning, then I don't have to own that for every student.
Something that I'm good at is researching, and thus, and interviews, and articles, and to make sure that the information is accurate.
Ideally, assessment is primarily for the student, and the students should own big parts of the assessment process. That can happen in a variety of ways. One is that they are continually engaged in self-assessment and peer assessment using rubrics.
So writing strengths.
Strength, influence.
And then, during this program.
I need to analyze what evidence we have.
When kids have that opportunity, they begin to value assessment. Assessment is for me, as a way to get the feedback that allows me to become the person I want to be. If we do this well, the kind of learner we should produce is someone who is self-initiating and self-motivated, understands the standards internally, and is continually driving towards excellence, is continually developing their own learning skills, and is able ultimately to learn on their own, independently, and collaboratively with others, in a world that is going to be very unpredictable, and in which those learning skills are going to be the most important determinant of success.
So hopefully, that video helped to give you some background, and each of those five areas are areas that you'll see sprinkled throughout the presentation and what we talk about tonight.
Just a quick question, is comprehensive the same as balanced?
That's a good question. Is comprehensive the same as balanced? Boy, I bet we could talk about that for an hour.
Is it meant to be in the same ballpark?
Yeah. I mean, I would say that it's, yeah, I would say, you want something comprehensive, so it's complete, and that it represent, I guess in order to be comprehensive, it would have to have all of the, it would have to have balance. I'm gonna go with yes.
Okay.
Finally answered. So anyway, so types of assessment and purpose. So in that video, you heard, you heard talk around formative and summative, and certainly, you're all familiar with the standardized tests. Tonight, we're gonna talk a little bit about benchmarking, which is, I would say, the next step in our journey, has been to start benchmarking and focusing on that. One of the ways that we're able to do that is, in some ways, through some forms of standardized, a standardized approach, like AmesWeb, which you'll hear more about. But it's been, without a written curriculum, we've always been assessing students. I mean, that we've always done, without giving you a report on it. Kids have been getting grades forever. But because we had no written curriculum, the way we do now, we had no way to standardize across our classes in the same way where we had an expectation for what the curriculum is, and then an expectation for what the assessment is going to be, and marrying the assessment to the defined curriculum. So benchmarking is a new part of our assessment, our balanced assessment system. Organizational decision-making, so what I, we mean by that is, when we are looking at assessment, we want to make sure that we are looking at assessment both based on the individual success of students, but also how we can take that data and look at ourselves programmatically. What is, how does our organization use data? So AmesWeb, you'll hear tonight about our world language data. So how do we have a system of data that actually informs us as an organization? We want to make sure that we're informing programs, so again, individual assessment is really important, but if we're not using that data to also look at our programs and look at the success of our programs, and defining how, when we implement something, how are we going to define its success? What is, what is an acceptable measure of success? And that is very challenging to do in schools. We also have teacher-developed assessments, so when we refer to formative and summative assessment, those are very often, the most common are those assessments that are being developed by teachers. And at this point, common assessments that are being developed by partnerships of teachers. Our focus on authentic and performance-based assessment is an area for growth for us, and in that, the video, they shared some examples, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna share some ideas around what authentic and performance-based assessment can look like for us, and how we see that as a goal moving forward to increase those opportunities for students in our classrooms. And authentic and performance-based are always teacher-and-student developed, not necessarily in collaboration, I would say always teacher-developed, and can be with the voice of students as well. I want to just take us back to our presentations from last year, as well as the beginning of the year. So the four instructional learning goals are at the heart of, of the work that we're doing. Ensuring that we are always assessing, teaching into and assessing for knowledge, skills, making meaning, and transfer. So in the video, you saw a moment where one of the teachers talked about knowing where she was going in every class, in every 42-minute, or 45-minute, or hour period, what are the outcomes for students? And that's the work that we've been doing at all levels. So after we do a building walkthrough, we will send a question to the teacher, asking, what, what goal were you working on in that 40-minute period, or that 45-minute period? And then the next obvious question is, what were your expected outcomes, and how do you know if you met those outcomes or not? Very often, as teachers, we see ourselves sort of on this continuous journey of teaching. So the bell rings, or the, or it's recess, or lunchtime, and we stop, and what do we say? We'll pick up tomorrow where we left off. And that's a shift in our practice that we're really working hard to change. We're trying to help and support teachers in defining daily outcomes for students, because that's the only way that we can have daily measures. Otherwise, what we resort to are these summative assessments. And we know that while summative is part of balanced, we need to have the other assessments if we're going to authentically assess students, and their knowledge, skill, and their ability to make meaning, and ultimately, transfer. So, the summative assessment, as we've talked about, tends to be an assessment that happens at the end. It is seen very often as an end game for students, and the expectation that after this assessment happens, we'll be moving on to something new. So for us, formative assessment is far more interesting, because formative assessment is part of a cycle. And so if you look at what happens in a really well-grounded formative assessment process, you design your instruction, you're clear, you're targeted, you're assessing, you're looking for, you're collecting data on what and how well students are doing, you're responding to that, you're changing your practice, you're shifting your goals, you're naming goals with students, so that students, that very first, early on in the video where that student said, I wanna know, like, why am I doing this? What is the purpose of this? It's being, it's having clarity and setting goals with and for students, so that they understand the context of their learning and where it fits. So, we're gonna share with you three different types of data sets that we currently are using in district. And I share these with you because I know you've heard me say that everything that we are doing, and everything we are implementing, we are considering what data will tell us what measures we can use. How well are our students doing? How effective is the program? Are we working toward a goal? And how do we know if we've met it? So, the three data sets that we're gonna look at are AmesWeb, the apple, which is the foreign language assessment, and our math module assessment. And I know that there's been a lot of talk about, you know, we need to have more data, and we need somebody to help us with our data, but we don't have the data yet to do that. So our commitment to you sitting in this room is that we genuinely believe that we need that data. And the way that we're gonna build our data sets is that every time we are implementing something new, we are naming what data will we use? What goals can we be setting? So yes, are there limitations right now to this type of data, the data sets you're gonna see? Yes. But there are really three good examples of how our approach has changed in the last four years, and what you can expect to continue to see from us as an administrative team. So the first is, we're gonna, we'll spend a little bit of extra time on this, so you've kept, you keep hearing AmesWeb, AmesWeb, AmesWeb. So what is AmesWeb? Two years ago, we launched our process of really developing our, or really three years now, but two years in action, our response to intervention. And through the leadership of our administrators at the elementary level, you know, Deb and Joyce have really led this work, and are leading the work in terms of its design, and making sure that teachers know and understand why response to intervention is important, but that really building a belief system around it. Because response to intervention isn't a program that you take off the shelf. It's really a system of beliefs about supporting students in the classroom at all levels. Not just our most needy students, but students at the, in the classroom through daily instruction. And in order to do that, we needed to develop our data system. So I'm really pleased to say that at this point, both Dowslane and Main Street School both have data teams that are up and running and functioning, and we are using data, and we are developing our criteria and our data points. And these, as you'll hear Deb and Joyce speak about, not only inform struggling learners, it informs all, it informs all, information for all students. Allison and David just started, we launched our RTI work last week, and Allison started with her data team at the middle school, and the high school will not be far behind. So again, I share that as an example of our commitment to using and developing our data systems, but those need to be developed before we are ready to then use, have somebody who's helping us to analyze all of our data. Right now, we're in the process of developing our data sets. So why AmesWeb? AmesWeb, first of all, is administered to all K-5 students. It is a benchmark assessment that gets administered three times. It's a fall, winter, and spring benchmark. So that means that we provide, that the students engage in, depending on the grade level, they all take an assessment in math and literacy, and we use that data both as foundational data for the beginning of the year, and then to inform our practice throughout the year. And ultimately, have our, to the point now where we have this really nice set of data that inform third to fourth grade, and actually, we were able to send fifth to sixth grade this year. So it's very, it's a very powerful tool, having benchmark data, because it gives you a way to talk about all students, their levels of success, their areas of struggle, strength, and then programmatically, where do we go now? The, the data set of AmesWeb informs the learning needs, as well as support services. So I'm gonna have Deb and Andrea are gonna speak a little bit about what you're seeing here, which is a profile of one first-grade classroom.
So this is, can, this is, do I have to get really close? Sorry. So this is actually called the Scores and Skills Plan. And every class that participates in a benchmark screening, you have the opportunity to view this for a class. So what we're most excited about for this type of data set is it gives a snapshot across one heterogenously grouped first grade of 19 students. You can see very nicely the color coding, which goes from the well below average to the well above average. And what's most exciting for us is when you look across, what you can see is that it breaks it down into these four levels of students, sometimes five, depending upon where students land, in the five subtest areas. So depending upon the grade, each grade level has different subtests, and they vary sometimes from the fall to the winter to the spring screenings. And they're designed to show the success and the progress, but also to help us monitor where students are growing, and where students need more support. So if you take a look at the subtests for first grade, you have auditory vocabulary, the letter, word, sounds fluency, oral reading fluency, phoneme segmentation, and then the word-reading fluency. So if I could just walk you through some real kind of patterns and trends that, as a class, and we're working side-by-side with teachers, first with our data team and our instructional leaders, and our next step for Andrea and I, is we are going to be working side-by-side with teachers to begin to look at these types of snapshots and reports, and how to make sense of it for their class. But what you might notice, and I'll remind you, that these were first graders in September. So we delivered this benchmark beginning on September 11th through the 25th. And what you would notice is that we have some real areas of strength. Our auditory vocabulary is a real area of strength for our students. They come in with amazing experiences, they come in with tremendous opportunities for discussion foundationally, and they, they now build that with the learning to read skills. So our first graders at this time of year, many of them, the majority of them are learning to read, but we do have students that are readers to learn, and they've already taken in all the foundational skills that they have. So if I would point you to the middle graph, which is oral reading fluency, very much foundational, you can see that across the levels, we have a spread of students that are landing in each of those levels. So we start to make decisions about those. Why? Where do we need to grow? So if we look, we could see, well, letter, word, and letter, word fluency would be an area- area that we really want to target. What's really nice about this data is if I point you to the bottom right-hand corner, you can see that it levels the children into low, medium and high. We can't show you this on this snapshot of it because it's a PDF, but on the actual AIMS Web, you can click on any one of those numbers of students and it'll actually open up to the students that are named now behind those numbers. And for each student, you can access a skills plan. And that further drills down the data to say, well, where were their strengths and where were their weaknesses within each of those five subtest areas? For teachers, what it does is it reaffirms the things that we know about students, but it gives us a starting point. When we move on to our next benchmark, what we're going to be looking for is the progress for each of those students across those areas. And then what were we doing instructionally to either move them to the next level, which could be from the aqua to the dark blue, or certainly from the orange to the yellow. And we want to see those students continue to progress.
So, you can look at this data by class, from your position, you can look at this data by class, by grade?
And by individual student.
And by individual student and by school.
Yep. Yep.
And what's also incredible to that point is when a teacher looks at this data by student, they get a skills plan from AIMS Web Plus. So, it breaks down where the students' strengths are and where their weaknesses are. So, teachers kind of inform their instruction, they could make small groups, they could figure out what they really need to hone in on for a student, where those gaps are. So, it's incredible information we're getting from AIMS Web Plus that really translates to the instruction in the classroom.
Do you want me to keep going or do you want to stop? I just want to, I want to give you enough time on AIMS Web.
I have questions, I don't want to.
No, that's, no, that's fine. If you have, absolutely.
Good point, ask AIMS Web questions?
Absolutely.
Does anybody have any questions about this section? About AIMS Web?
I just want to say thank you.
You're very welcome. It's our pleasure, actually. We're thrilled with this.
Oh, I mean, this is what we've been talking about.
Absolutely.
Very exciting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I guess.
Another question.
Brian?
I guess, is this being used in every first grade classroom?
It's been, it's being used in every K-1, 2 and 3 classroom as well as in 4, 5.
Right. I'm talking not just the actual assessment, but the teachers now being taught to go in and see, okay, I've, I have these four students who were low performing in this skill, maybe I need to target this particular thing for them, so.
Yeah, so, and I would say that with any rollout, what we're, we're growing our plan in a very comprehensive and thoughtful manner. So, certainly with our data team, we just had a meeting where we pulled in our instructional leaders to give them a level of understanding of what the different reports are, how do we access them and how do you read them? And for Andrea and I, our next step, which is similar to Main Street School, is to really go into what we would put coaching side by side, having this data in front of teachers, sitting next to them with our data team to help them understand how this could be useful for them in their daily instruction. So, it can, at a first glance, it looks summative, but really it's such an amazing formative tool. And I know Joyce is going to share a little bit more specifically about a student.
And this is, just to be clear, K-5 only, right?
Right now, yep.
Well, no, we'll actually pilot it in sixth grade for fall, for the winter benchmark. For the winter.
And I think the end there is kind of, the beginning or maybe most of the answer I have, which is a comparison with, you know, the state testing that we do. I don't know if you want to compare and contrast a little bit, you know, why, there's been a lot of, you know, in the community, in the public across the state distrust or concern raised. I mean, you mentioned already that we take it, you do it three times over the year, so I guess that would be a difference. How long does it take and why as an educator would you, you know, what are your feelings about, about those, you know, both what you, the information you get as a state and how you break that down as a data team versus what you might get from AIMS Web?
Well, let's just be, just, at Dow's Lane, they never really, I mean, by the time the state assessment data comes, they don't even have the kids anymore. So, that might be a better question for Joyce because they're using the state assessment data with this. So, maybe that's a good Joyce question when she gets up. Yep. Okay. So, the next window into AIMS Web that we wanted to give you was more of an individual student look because Deb gave you the class look. So, Joyce is going to talk about an individual student.
Well, Deb and Andrea did a really, a really clear job in explaining sort of what AIMS Web, what that full report, so what you're seeing, I don't know how they could see that, I printed it because.
They have a close-up and personal too.
No, I meant Deb and Andrea.
Deb looked like she was reading the slide.
Is that what it was? So, what you're looking at, so oftentimes when we think of response to intervention, we are thinking about our students who struggle, right? We're identifying the ways in which we can target that instruction. You just mentioned it also, pulling small groups because you noticed that there's some sort of deficit and what's the instruction that a teacher can do, either one-on-one or a small group, to support that student to greater success in that identified area. Well, the student that you see up on the screen is actually a high-performing student. And we purposefully selected the students so that you could see. And so, what you're looking at here is the individual benchmark for one student. And the left chart is 2016-17 for this student so that you could see fall, winter and spring benchmark. And the right hand is her, is the student's fall benchmark. So, the black lines, those solid black lines that you see are what's called the target. And that's what AIMS Web says where students should meet in terms of the benchmark. So, students who are at or below that line, AIMS Web is telling us, those are the kids who really need an intervention plan. The circle, the gray circle around the black dot with the dash line, that's the trajectory, oh, thank you, that's the trajectory of the national norm. And so, that's where in terms of, it's a nationally-normed benchmark. So, that's where nationally, where students are performing in the trajectory that they, that the nation is saying that the students take. What you see with our student is she is above average, but you can notice that her trajectory takes a similar progress line to the national norm. So, what this suggests and shows for us is that our students who are high-performing, we are also providing instruction to push them to greater success as the year moves along. And so, while we think of response to intervention as our way to intervene with our struggling students, we are looking at the ways in which this data can also be used to support our students who are strong and need to be pushed also. And do you want me to answer that question?
Oh, sure, yeah, that would be great.
So, for us, for RTI, we actually do look at the state, New York State test scores because we have, all of our students have a New York State test score. And we are, we do look at that as one data point for determining if students receive response to intervention, along with AIMS Web as well as other data points, depending what content area, math or ELA. And so, we have looked at the correlation between where students fall in the New York State test compared to where the information on AIMS Web. And there's a pretty close correlation with very few outliers in terms of how students perform percentage-wise on AIMS Web and get a four on the test, a three, similar, two and a one. So, there is a close connection which supports it as a second data point, you know, as both being data points for our decision-making.
I was just looking up, where's, what are the national, what is the source for the national norm to data in terms of?
It's there. So, AIMS Web, they, it's their own internal. The AIMS Web sets those national norms based on everybody who uses AIMS Web Plus.
Got it. And is there, I mean, are they, you know, are they in every state or are they regional? I mean, what is their, do you know their reach?
They're everywhere.
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 Okay.
It's Pearson.
It's Pearson.
It's Pearson.
Pearson of frontline. It's like, don't say, who knows in the world.
Got it. Great.
So, maybe you noticed we're a little giddy around this topic. I think we're really excited. We have something that we can look at, we can look at it across the grades, we're excited. We were happy to share this information with the sixth grade teachers and, and looking to expand it and figure out what is the right entry point for middle school. There are schools that do AIMS Web through eighth grade. So, you know, that's a decision that will happen, you know, certainly with David Allison and the middle school teachers. But we are, we're excited to have these benchmarks and, and we see how it's going to inform us, our information about students, but also about programs. So, it feels like a great next step.
And I don't, you haven't done a survey or anything, but in terms of the, how teachers' perception of it, I mean, is it well-received or is it useful?
I'm going to look to the administrators.
However you would like to try and characterize it?
I can just speak to, I mean, I think the more that we use it and unpack it together, the more they're finding meaning in it. I think data sometimes can feel thwart, it's scary. And you don't, when you don't know what it means and you haven't had the help to really unpack it together, I think we've seen teachers really through our RTI process, when they really can drill down to a specific student and the more we're surfacing these progress monitoring tools, our interventionists have been amazing at leading the charge of really showing all the different ways that AIMS Web can support students. It takes time. So, I think AIMS Web certainly is not a replacement for the professional knowledge of our teachers. I think what we want to support our teachers to see is that this is an additional data point that can confirm and validate and give a name to what teachers know in their gut is an area of struggle for students. And I would say that's one of our greatest successes. We know that our teachers know our students. What this gives us is the language to name it to a data point and connect it to a really explicit intervention. And if we can do that, then it goes back to the question, how do we know? And then we can progress monitor. When it lives in this soft kind of, I know they need help, this helps us to name what is that? How do we really measure that they're making strides and successes? How do we really know we're delivering the right interventions and the right core instruction for all so that all children can move forward? It's always a goal and there's always going to be ups and downs, but I think for the most part, we're building that meaning and we're building that ownership and that reliability factor to really show that it's usable and it works.
So, I think, there's no slot on this, but maybe this is a good time to add. The other piece that we've put in place is we own a product called RTIM Direct. And RTIM Direct is, it's basically a database, it's where we store our information. Because in years past, we've actually done some really good intervention work at all of our schools, but one of our challenges has been, especially in the transition year, how does Main Street get all that information about Dow's and how does the middle school get all that information about Main Street and Dow's? How does the high school get Main Dow's, Main Street, middle school? So, RTIM Direct is a product that we're using now, which is where we are logging and keeping all of our information. So, we can upload the state assessment data there. So, I would say guidance councils, for instance, can easily access, like they look up Raina Core and they can get my whole profile. So, state assessment data was the only data that we used to have. Now, we're actually logging interventions. So, now what our teachers will be able to see is what interventions were already tried so that we're not starting fresh like, oh, let me figure out what I could learn about Raina today. No, we have a lot of information already about Raina, so please don't start from scratch like you have some blank slate here. In fact, we have all these educators who have done a lot of work already with Raina. So, let's build on that rather than act like, oh, this is some new idea or new student in our school. So, RTIM Direct is an incredible resource. We've done some early training with the teachers and our interventionists have had a little bit more. And we're hoping that over the course of this year and then by the end of 18, 19, RTIM Direct would be up and running in all of our schools. Again, the data is only going to be as good as what we're collecting. So, it will be the strongest, obviously, at our elementary, serving our middle school students and middle school staff and then eventually also into high school. And that's a key also because you can have great data, but if you don't have a way to transmit that and communicate it, then it only, it's only good to a certain level. We want to make it deep and thoughtful and helpful all the way through a child's career time. I hate, it's not really a career, a child's time here in the Irvington schools. So, that's AIMS Web too. So, I'm going to move on unless, Marie, you have a question?
I do.
Okay.
Is AIMS Web used solely for intervention for students who are struggling? Because it seems to me, that's kind of what I keep hearing in the word intervention, intervention. And it kind of, you know, when this was first presented, to me, it seems like a useful tool for all students.
It is.
To push everyone, high-fly.
Right. So, that's what Joyce was saying, that this particular student.
She used that as an example.
Right.
Right. She used that as an example, but it just seems like a lot of the language and a lot of the, I don't know, it keeps coming back to it's an intervention and.
Well, AIMS Web, from the AIMS Web data is how we decide. So, let me give you, I'm glad you asked this question. So, let me take you back in history, not that long ago. So, it used to be that if I'm a classroom teacher at the elementary level, I look at my group of students and in my mind, I'm thinking, here are my students and hmm, here are my five lowest students. Not benchmarked against any other students, they have no knowledge of how those five compare to the five, to the twenty students next door, but here are my kids, here are my five lowest, you know, so Joyce, here are my five students who would need some services. Well, there's no context for that, it's only the context of that individual teacher with their twenty students. So, what we've been able to do by implementing a benchmarking system is to say, let's look at where our students perform across the grade. So, Ms. Tassianis might only have one student who needs services, but Mr. Andresco might have seven. As it turns out now, really because we have this data, it informs Joyce's placement as well. So, Joyce is trying to balance their classes, right? So, now she also can look and say, well, who are the students that I'm putting in each of these classrooms? How am I balancing them? Am I balancing them based on need? So, maybe I put my students who have some math needs in a certain classroom where they're going to get support. So, this informs a lot of different pieces. So, AIMS Web is not an RTI tool. AIMS Web is a benchmarking tool that gives us consistent information over the course of three assessments over the course of a year and then beyond. But, it is an amazing tool at really helping us define our services so that we're sure that we are servicing the students who are performing across the grade level, not just a number of students per class, which is years ago how it was done. And by the way, not unique in Irvington, I think that's the nature of it. When you don't have a benchmarking tool, what else do you have except to say, I don't know, I think Raina's not doing that well. Okay, let's take her. So, this is designed, so AIMS Web in and of itself is a benchmarking tool. How we're using it is partly to define it for interventions. Does that make sense? Kim?
Maybe this may be stepping back a little bit, but I was hearing some of what Maria was asking in my question too. Can you define or even give examples of interventions, whether for a child who is, say, performing lower in a class versus one that is high-performing? And maybe that would help us also to understand really this basic language that you're using.
Sure. So, I don't know if Deborah, Joyce, do you want to give an example? Joyce? Deb?
I think that actually that original slide is something that, and when Raina said giddy.
It is exciting. So, for auditory vocabulary, I mean, this, this intrigues me because what we also, not only just our students that need an intervention. So, if I were to look at this class and I wanted to come up with a very explicit oral reading fluency intervention, I might be taking students who are in that orange, I might be doing some explicit instruction into the three components of fluency and it's simply a timer, one minute, having them read to themselves, read to a partner, and then maybe five trials, they want to see how their oral reading fluency is improving. But if I take a look at auditory vocabulary, and I just saw this going on in a specific classroom. So, what intrigues me about that is that we have students in the above-average, high number of students in above-average. What an opportunity there. Because that would say that those students are right there. So, what intervention can we provide in a literacy station? So, for example, I just witnessed, there's a, it's an online site called Epic where students actually do an inventory of their, their likes and their, and their age and it gives them a reading list. And they can pick from that reading list and for the sole purpose of doing an intervention of increasing their vocabulary. So, I saw a teacher do a five-station work on vocabulary, very explicit from the lower level, which is still word study, where they're actually just looking at patterns of words to build their vocabulary, to another group of students who were doing a specific intervention around synonyms. And then this group of students, very strong, on Epic with the headphones, doing specific recordings of new vocabulary and then taking that vocabulary and having multiple things to do with them, but with the purpose of accessing that new vocabulary and using it in their own writing. You can manage that over a five-day period where you're tracking how many new words and then those students set a goal to take five of those words and use it in some new writing, which was actually another station. So, for me, one of the greatest opportunities is to say, auditory vocabulary is a huge component of building comprehension. So, for those students, what this would tell me, I would click on those students that scored in that aqua level, I would identify them in my group, I would design that intervention, give them a five-day intensive opportunity to build their vocabulary, and then you progress monitor. So, we have students that are on the lower level, still working on identifying, let's say, for example, CVC words, which is consonant-vowel consonant words, to build their vocabulary and how they read them, to build their oral fluency, to students that have a strong foundational piece of work where they, now we want to bring them to the next level. So, that would be the best way for me to show in one classroom, a teacher is able to access this, design their instruction explicitly. this, design their instruction explicitly, and then use stations as their practice.
So do the education, these questions, I'm sorry.
Try and use that.
Dumb it down, please.
Do the teachers, so you've got how many first grade teachers?
We have seven. Seven classrooms.
Seven first grade classrooms. So seven first grade classroom teachers meet around this common data and talk about across all the students and what strategies might work and what strategies might not work, et cetera?
For their own class right now. So we're at building blocks. So right now, we're helping teachers to understand what this data can show them. For some teachers, yes, they're really drilling into the students that are identified as high risk. What we're supporting teachers to say is looking at your class profile, those students that are in that Aqua, in that blue, and how instructionally, as Joyce showed, progress and giving them exactly what they need.
So I guess this question would be more for Raina. So I guess the next step that you were referring to earlier would be that in the building blocks of this work, that.
Hang tight, three slides. I think you're going to be happy.
Just to clarify, I think this is what's throwing me off. You keep using the words intervention. To me, intervention is remedial, but what I'm hearing is intervention is pushing everyone. You're getting involved and you're pushing them, so it's everyone across the board.
So maybe a little background, like let me, let's step back a little bit on RTI and what RTI is. So response to intervention is comprised of three tiers. It's actually called now MTSS. I'm still going to call it RTI for now. RTI is tier one, tier two, and tier three. Tier one is classroom, is general classroom instruction. So the expectations of a good response to intervention system and system of beliefs is that there, it is steeped in good core instruction. So everything starts with tier one. So when you hear us talk about intervention, over time, you're going to hear us talk about that even more, because what we're looking to do is to really get to the point where what we say is every student, the answer is not always to take a student out or have somebody push in. There is just good core instruction that if we're paying attention and we're targeted and we're clear, and I want to just go back to this whole idea of formative instruction, that I now recognize that Raina has a need. As a classroom teacher, as part of my core instruction, I might implement a tier one intervention. Because right now, for whatever reason, Raina is struggling in a particular area. So that is an intervention. It doesn't mean it's a specialist, it doesn't mean it's a reading specialist or a math specialist. It very well could be the classroom teacher providing that intervention. And quite honestly, at the K3 level especially, but even K5, we know that it is that formative and early intervention that actually moves students from being successful learners and not being what sometimes we have concerns about is like kids who stay in our support programs for extended periods of time, when maybe if we could have provided that early intervention, we might have been able to remediate that and move that out. So you will hear us use intervention as a general term as well as through our interventionists. Does that make sense, Maria?
Yep.
Okay. So the next set of data is a little bit different because I'm not actually going to share any data with you, I'm going to tell you about this data. And why is that, you might say? Show us the money, Raina. So here's why I'm not. We, several years ago, really looked at our world language program. We have spent the last three years rewriting our curriculum, redesigning our approach, and rethinking what our true goals around the language program in Irvington is. And that goal has shifted from a program that was deeply steeped in vocabulary and grammar, and now has shifted to speaking and listening. Our goal is that every student who graduates from Irvington High School, who engages in language, especially in a place where we have students who stay with language for many years, they are leaving Irvington speaking that language. Now, I am not going to say fluently, I'm not going to say to what level. I think we're going to figure that out, what's possible as we go. But what we know right now is that is our goal. And therefore, as a result, we said, well, how will we know if we've set this goal, what will be our measure? And so we have implemented what's called the Apple Assessment, and it is a speaking and listening assessment. And we started by just administering it to eighth and 10th graders. So I chose not to share the actual data with you tonight because the difference between sharing a grade level of first grade data or an individual teacher, you don't know whose class, that is, you have no information, but because of, we're small, we only have one or two teachers. And so we felt this was early on in this journey, and we felt like we weren't looking to display that kind of data. But what we did want, do want to share with you is the commitment that we're making. And it's a two-leveled commitment. One is to world language in our beliefs about the importance and value of kids really being able to speak, speak another language and they leave here, especially again, if they're committing to so many years of being in that language. And not that grammar and vocabulary are not important, but we shifted, we clearly shifted the goals. So what you can see here is we will be this year administering it to all students in seventh through 12th grade. That is, we have some benchmark data, but our, this year will be really good benchmark data because we'll have it for every grade, but we have from last year, so we're using that. It has already informed the instruction of our classrooms. I would say certainly, I'm looking at Matt, Allison, David, and David and I, we are in and out of the language classrooms, and not only do you at any time see speaking activities going on and kids engaged, but the greatest change that we've seen is the level of risk taking that we see. So I don't know if any of you wanted to share anything around that as far as what you've seen?
So I think the word risk-taking is great, Raina. Actually, I was just thinking about a classroom really recently that I was in, but that we're all in all the time. And the sense is that when we go to a world language classroom, whether it's Spanish or French, we go there to speak in that language, to ask questions in that language, to really engage, and ultimately, in its best form, begin to think in that language, right? I mean, that's when you know you've really reached a point where students are transferring the learning that they're engaged in. What's changed is that there was often a whole lot of speaking in English to get to doing some tasks in Spanish or some tasks in French. Now, I would say 85%, 90% of the classes are being conducted in the target language, including directions for tasks. And that is a huge change. And that speaks to, I think, the goal that we have around getting kids to really speak the language, to make meaning of words, to figure out how to communicate when they don't know all of the words, when they have to try to find their way from point A to point B. That's what we see. And so I think as we use this data, that helps us to continue that goal. But it's a culture change even before the data comes into place, I think, that we're seeing.
You know, I would add to that. You know, at the high school, we're starting to see how teachers, you know, Deb said it well before, you know, this is still in process and our teachers are figuring it out. One of the things that they're doing is learning how to be trained to make these assessments at these levels that are up on the board. But what they're also starting to do now is train their students to be able to do that. So I was recently in a world language class, and I observed the process whereby the teacher's been working with the students to set goals for themselves around the very detailed rubrics that allow them to understand what level they're speaking at and how their speaking and listening skills are evolving. And within that, students are learning how to give each other feedback. And within that, you know, Raina said risk-taking, I think of the risk-taking that's going on, and how students are learning how to sort of guide each other along, and the types of feedback that I'm listening and hearing them give one another is so technical and so supportive as well in being able to say to a student, you know, you had targeted verb usage, or you had targeted, you know, wanting to be more expressive in using more words in your sentences. And it's really great to see, and it's exactly the type of work that we're looking for, and it's really happening. So it's exciting.
So there's two key changes. The curriculum revision work is working in parallel. So we have worked, and the world language department has just been in amazing collaboration, sixth through 12th. Everything is being done together. They have a department grading policy that they're looking at, they looked at their Apple data together. The revision of the curriculum is they have looked at each year, and they're making the high-interest curriculum. So where are kids more about, especially in the middle level, where they're more egocentric, looking at themselves versus topics around social media? So trying to engage kids in the language on topics that kids are interested in, rather than just maybe what might be traditional about talking about, you know, countries around the world, it's really trying to put it in the context of high-interest topics. So that kids are learning the language through something that they're actually also interested in learning about. So they have changed their grading policy, there's a high focus on the formative around speaking. I would say 10% on vocab and grammar, that probably used to be 75% more, Maria's saying. So it's been a shift, and I think probably, if we're a little giddy about AmesWeb, we're a little giddy about world language too. We're excited. They are, it's a great department that is just working together, and they are really committed. Just the fact that we are now using the ACTFAL, we're using ACTFAL as our guide, which are the standards, and now that we've named, so the first step or the measure in the goals, what is it we're even looking for? So now we have it names by grade level, where do we think students should be? Where can they be? And as we're building our, this benchmark data, we'll continue to learn and we'll continue to adjust our curriculum and instruction to meet those needs based on the goals that we've set out for ourselves.
I just add one thing, you know, it brings me back to something you said earlier on in the presentation, Raina, where you were talking about naming learning goals on a daily basis. You know, one of the major changes in our world language program is this idea of identifying daily learning targets for students. Getting granular to the point, because what that allows for is that ongoing formative assessment and that very directed targeted feedback, you know, to the point where students are in a process of self-assessment that augments the teacher's assessment on a daily basis, really being able to cement what it is that they've learned in that particular class and use that as they go forward to the next class. It's a big change for us.
And a big commitment from each year to the next, right? Like you see it, there's so much conversation about, wait, what about when the kids come to me, and how will that work? And so, we're excited.
I have a question, it's a little, you mentioned side-by-side, the curriculum work being developed, and I was trying to use the parent portal to, or the, not the parent portal, it's the portal into the curriculum with Rubicon Atlas. So I mean, it appears maybe there's a gap in being able to look at a few years of some of the languages.
Yeah.
How does that work in terms of in the classroom as you're revising curriculum? You know, how do you figure out what you're teaching at a given time?
I mean, I don't even want to.
I mean, you know, part of it is, so one is that we're developing new curriculum progressively moving forward. So, you know, there's been such a collective effort that the idea isn't try to do everything at once. So, you know, we started at our earliest level, and we've been progressing upwards. The other is while there's a basis of some static curriculum, meaning topics, and the approach is changing, whereas maybe the curriculum hasn't. So although you may see curriculum at our upper-level world language classes at the high school, still looking apparently the same as they did two, three, four years ago, I can tell you that the process by which they're addressing that content and the strategies are very much aligned to speaking and listening. So they're not yet at the point of having a full revision of the curriculum to fully show that, but it's happening in our classes.
And part of that is they are actually writing the curriculum for the grades altogether. So in other words, they committed to looking at, they've named out those units and they're developing that. So in seventh grade, for instance, you should see the new curriculum, the sixth grade is all new. Seventh grade, I don't know if it's public, what they've done.
So sixth grade, seventh grade's in process, right?
Okay.
If you were in the sixth grade, you'll see it'll be listed under world language, it'll be listed under Spanish.
Right. So that, I'm so glad you just said that. So the other really thing that we think is wonderful is, French or Spanish, the curriculum is the same. And it's the language you're learning. Right. So now it's world language six. So that's how you know when it's, when if you're looking at the revised curriculum, that's what you would know. So we're also really excited because, you know, it's the commitment of teachers to each other that really creates that collaboration, and really a school community that ultimately works and builds on itself from year to year. So sometimes when someone says, well, what's your evidence? That is such good evidence that we've been able to really make this kind of a shift. So we're very proud of this work.
So in terms of assessment, you know, this is, because of where you're at, it's more of a baseline, I guess? Maybe you said that earlier.
Yeah. So right now, when we get our data for this year, we'll have the eighth and the 10th grade data that we'll use as a comparison. This will be our first year of 7-12. But already, the internal dialogue around what they saw kids able to do, it generated some pretty good dialogue amongst the teachers about seeing how successful kids really can be and where else they can continue to beef that up. So, David, do you want to?
Yeah. I mean, so when it comes to assessment, I think that this Apple Assessment has given us a broader context by which to assess students along the way. We talk about assessing for these daily learning targets, but we're also assessing for proficiency along the way with a very detailed proficiency rubric. And so teachers have to balance those two things. They can balance, they balance what it is that students can say, but they're also looking to grow how they can say it and how much of it they can say. So they can look at things like speaking stamina, where how long can two kids engage in conversational speaking with one another on a topic? And seeing that grow from 30 seconds to two or three or four minutes without ceasing, having this ongoing back-and-forth dialogue. It's impressive, you know, eighth graders doing things like that. That's movement, and that's ongoing assessment data that's just as meaningful ultimately as this summative assessment.
Just a suggestion.
Sure.
Because I would have loved to have seen what an example of what it looks like. So for example, looking back a couple of slides to the AmesWeb, I mean, you could have just redacted or whited out that information. We didn't really need to know grade or language. I mean, to me.
I guess it would have no context though, because you need, in other words, we'd want to show you. I guess I'm just going to ask you to bear with us that we felt like first game, you know, first time out of the gate, part of what you're going to hear me talk about in a little while is giving us the room to do this work without it being necessarily feeling public and high stakes if we want teachers to engage in it. So it felt like we could share this without any concern around that. But with the Apple data, I think, first of all, even just what you might see at the level, remember, it was their first go at it. You know, the teachers themselves were like becoming familiar with the assessment. They're actually, and we're going to do some training this year on how to measure proficiency. So I think we're in the early stages, and we felt that it could be, it could feel like high risk at a time when we're trying to actually engage teachers in using data. So I get it, I hear you, and I say more to come.
But also, I think just generically, when we've been talking at different times about this, you know, there's the identifying what we're trying to accomplish, this seems like we're at the implementation phase, which is how we're implementing it. And then comes the how do we know? Is that?
Yep. And I guess what we're saying is we can share examples of work that's changed. So as a result of the teachers looking at that eighth and 10th grade data, it put, it put the goal right at that forefront, like, wow, now we're really assessing kids for this. Wait a minute, if these kids didn't do as well in here, well, why not? And maybe I'm not doing as much speaking in my class as I need to. And we, I would say this year, we have seen it, it is consistent across the board. So I think we would expect to actually see a change. So we're looking forward to actually sharing some data, but we're just going to ask you to hold tight a little bit longer for us. So here we go. So this would be data, Dave Graber, stay with me, this is what you've been waiting for. So here's a good example, though. Here's a good example of how we move to the next levels. So this is data that, yes, when, I want to say Dave asks Deb, are teachers looking at data together? Yes. In math, we have evolved to a point where this is part of the regular dialogue, looking at the assessment. So what you're looking at here is our math dataset. You're looking at mid-module two data, and you're looking at end-of-module-two data. If you look at that, the end column, what you can see is the mid is formative, right? It's a mid-module assessment. That gives the teacher a sense of where the kids are and how they're doing right now in their math. Now, with the expectation that they're continuing to teach, and now. Now, with the expectation that they're continuing to teach, and now, at the end, we hope to see progress. So what you'll notice here is, for instance, for student number five, that number didn't change, but you also have to look across. So what you're seeing here are the four math standards being taught within that unit, and you can see how student one performed in each of the standards, in the mid-module, and then you can go down and you can see how that student performed. So student number one, pretty much you can see, performed pretty well in that end-of-module. So that teacher was able to use this mid-module, as well as we have a lot of formative assessment in our math program, we have exit tickets, we have debriefs with kids around what they're learning and understanding. And so therefore, this is where we can show how we're looking at standards, we're looking at performance, we're doing question analysis, answer analysis, through those mid-module questions, and ultimately resulting in the best part, which is saying, stepping back with the teachers to say, so what do we know now? Why, why did kids do well? So now, if in Raina's class, kids didn't perform as well as every other second-grade class, well, now there's an opportunity to say, well, Raina, how did you teach that? Like, what happened there? Or, that's so weird, I taught the same, same way last year, my kids performed really well. How weird is this, that now my data looks like this? So for us, the dialogue that's going on around that data is really, really useful, it supports individual students, it supports classes of students, it supports our program instruction, this is the whole package, this is where we want to be. And we then can also use this data, especially at the fourth and fifth grade level, to do some correlation around these standards and the state assessment. So again, state assessment, moment in time, but doesn't mean we can't use it to inform and correlate other data. Yes.
So a couple of questions, based, like you said, you've been using this since, I guess, I don't know, 2012?
2012 is when we rolled it out, but not to this level.
Oh, right, 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 right.
Yes, okay.
But I'm curious, right, so first, who produced this report?
So that's what I was just going to say. So there's, there's four reasons why we have, why we are where we are with our math right now. First is, we had a really thoughtful, comprehensive rollout. We planned the rollout of these math modules thoughtfully, carefully, and consistently. Second is, we have implemented with fidelity, we have never walked away to say, okay, everybody's good to go, now let's move on to something else. We've been able to do that because we have our math coach, Christine Rosner. So as much as I would say, and I'll say Andrea now, too, but she's only here a month, but Andrea, but I know she believes it, but Deb and Joyce and I, we are very committed to this work, we're committed to fidelity, to implementing with fidelity, and the support of Christine, because the reality is, none of us could do the kind of day-to-day work and monitoring of where we are that our math coach can do, Christine. So Christine is incredible, and she leads these math, she now leads, and I'm going to show you how, and how much it's come full circle as well. When we started this work five years, you know, maybe six years ago, we had a consultant come in, and she was working with every grade level, and Christine was a side-by-side partner with her. And once we had Christine up and going, we didn't need that consultant anymore, and Christine started leading the work. She started to introduce the idea of looking at data and just collecting it. Now she's to the point where Christine meets throughout the year with every grade level, we do, we do math learning sessions where we do two things, three, four things. We look at data, we look at the unit and where the success is, and where that unit is doing what we need it to do, and where the instructional design of the lessons are. She looks with the teachers at an upcoming unit so that they can preview where there might be some needs within that unit. And one of the pieces that we've added, which we think has been an incredible addition, linked to RTI and data, and giving teachers interventions, is now our math interventionists, as part of that learning session, demonstrate one intervention that they, that a teacher might do with students. So now every teacher leaves there knowing and understanding not only their own data, the data of the, of the grade level, they understand, they've reflected on the last unit, they have a vision for the upcoming unit, and they also have some ideas for how to intervene for students who aren't working at the level that they need. And Christine also provides that insight into, into enrichment. What is, what about a student who is performing at a high level, what are we going to do for that?
Please, Christina.
She's amazing. She's our gift.
Yeah, I know, she is amazing. This is like a whole nother level now.
It's, it's incredible.
So my second question is, it's less a question, more a suggestion, I suppose.
Sure.
I just think back to the beginning of this math journey, right? Both, you know, it's been a journey, right? With the community and with, you know, very lively chat about math and what math should look like, and so it would be really interesting, I would, I would wager on it, if I was a betting man, that if you took a look with as much data as you have over the last couple of years, it would be really interesting to show the community how, I mean, I don't, I haven't looked at the data, so I don't know, how the kids are doing mathematically over the last couple of years at the Common Core, because it's been such a hot-button issue, still kind of lives out there a little bit, but the idea that the shift in instruction that you authored and that you guys led at the building level and that the teachers all, you know, bravely undertook, has had an affect on student learning, right, over time. Then a lot of that, I think it would be really interesting to see that at some point, not in the near future.
Yep, no, absolutely.
Not a request, it's just a suggestion.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, Brian?
So the math goes only K through five, or?
Well, the, well, the math modules go K through five. So at the sixth through eighth level, obviously, we still teach to the standards, teachers use a lot of their own teacher-made materials, and they use modules as a reference point, but they're not used as tightly as they are in K-5. And, and one of the things that I would just add for that is, you know, when we set out on this journey, rather than pick a math program, what we set out, we said is that we are, our elementary teachers are going to become stronger teachers of mathematics, so that if tomorrow the modules went away and we brought in some new program, whatever that would be, what we would hope is that our teachers never have to rely as heavily as they used to on a book, because they have a deeper understanding of the mathematics and the needs for kids, so.
Yeah, I, and it's great, I guess the question is, is there an idea to take this type of detailed data analysis and bring it into the middle school and bring it into the high school?
Do you want me to answer that, or you want? I mean, I would say we currently, in other words, you know, middle school and high school teachers look at data differently, and they also have different kinds of datasets. So at the elementary, you know, we don't even do much assessment formalized like this. So I would say our middle school and high school teachers are always looking at their data. I think one of the efforts that we're trying to make, certainly at the high schools, we're trying to find higher correlation between some, some of our standardized tests, which can kind of take over at the secondary level, especially when we start to talk about Regents, and so our secondary teachers do data analysis. I don't know that they do as much question and item analysis as they do more looking at their data and using it as formative for their daily instruction. So as we're moving RTI up, it will demand some more detailed analysis, as well as AIMS Web is starting, is already starting to generate a conversation around, well, wait a minute, how will this AIMS Web data correlate, or how will we be able to look at AIMS Web data and also our math instruction, which is what's happened also at the elementary.
So you're saying there are data analysis being done at the secondary level, let's just take math, because it's a very easy, you do, you know, you don't, you know, well, as opposed to like English and writing or either movement of. What does that look like? Like, I feel like we have, you give us great examples, like we have a really great understanding on what you're doing at the elementary level in terms of, you know, how you know the kids are getting it, and how you're analyzing it, and if you need to, you reflect on it, and if you need to tweak anything. What does that look like at the secondary level?
So that's what I'm saying, so I switch back to our Apple slide, because what I'm saying is that-
That's World Language, but that's-
No, 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 I'm using it as an example, but it's, it was developed as a part of a process. So that's my point, that our commitment is to continue to develop our curriculum. So you're going to hear me talk in a second about stage two of our unit planners. So part of our ongoing work is, first and foremost, is developing these grade-level assessments, so that every teacher on a grade level who teaches the same course, there needs to be a summative, at minimum, a summative assessment that is the same, no matter whose classroom you're in. Well, the reason we've started to do that is so that we can start to do this kind of work. So this work is most powerful, as why David's saying, are you talking about it as a grade level? It's most powerful when we can look across a course, across an assessment of a whole group of students, so that it doesn't become so much about an individual teacher, it's what, what have we named as the instructional goals for this class? What is the knowledge, skill, and transfer that we're looking for? Well, now that we're naming this in stage one of our unit planners, stage two, the assessment, that's where we are right now. We're going there because we have this goal and expectation that over the next few years, every teacher should be able to look at a dataset that says, I understand my individual learners, which I think right now is where they are, they do know their kids, our teachers do, they give assessments, they know where kids are, they're supporting kids, they're helping kids, kids are coming for extra help, or they're, we're trying to push kids beyond. But it's the broader look at data that we haven't been doing as much, and again, having a written curriculum and having stage-two assessment is the base, you have to have that before you can do the next piece. The reason we are where we are in math is because we started this work five years ago, right?
I get that, I get that.
And this World, and this, we started three years ago.
Right.
So I'm trying to show you the journey, the path, that we're looking to do across the curriculum.
I get that, and this is incredible, and it looks like, you know, something, this is incredible work, and I'm not taking away from that, but at the secondary level, how do you, like-
But that's what I'm saying, Maria, that's where we are right now, we're at, this year, we launched our work around stage-two assessment, so that's how we're going to, the same work, I'm trying to model that we have the same body of work in everything we're doing right now.
Okay, so, I get that, but what I'm, I guess my question is, is, as a parent, with a kid in high school, how do I know my kid is learning? Because right now, it looks like you have a test, you get a score, and they're either learning or they're not learning. So it's kind of like the old ways?
Well, it is, and, and again, and I don't want to, I'm not trying to minimize or diminish those old ways, I think what we're saying is, that's why I'm saying, I think our teachers know our students, I don't want to minimize what's been going on, but what we've been saying as a goal for us for these last few years is to be more systemic in our, in our approach to using data. So our goal through the development of stage-two is to be able to do that across courses, across programs. What we're modeling for you tonight is how we have been able to do that, but it takes time to do it, and, but it is our commitment to be able to look across our courses and our programs to say, yeah, we actually do know, and here's how we know that we're achieving the levels of success that we've defined. So I don't know if Dave or David want to add something to what I've said?
The only thing that I would add is, you know, I, I think at the high school level, things get, you know, there's a nuance, it becomes very tricky, you know, going back to the four learning goals, you know, I, I think it's, it's been very traditional to look at high school as so heavy in content, that we become very focused in knowledge, and to assess knowledge, we become very focused at times in formalized summative assessments or, or traditional summative assessments. So I, I think, you know, at the high school, we're starting to learn how to, A, identify skills, so you brought up the example of, of math, Maria. You know, I, I think it's been so traditional for high school math teachers to look at their, their curriculum as scope and sequence of content. So today's lesson followed by tomorrow's lesson, so if a student is struggling, I can say they're struggling in solving equations, and, you know, that, there may be a skill to that, but often we define it as the units or the, the lessons within a unit that they're struggling. We're trying to learn how to be able, the same way we've done it now in World Language, to identify the skills and then drill down within that, how do you teach into those skills? How do you identify when, where someone's doing really strongly or someone may need some support? So it's not just saying, well, we already did solving equations three weeks ago, and now we moved on, so that issue is perpetuating, we can target that, that intervention, whether it's an intervention because someone is struggling, or whether we can progress because we now know that differentiation. But I think to speak to what Raina's saying, I mean, we're, we're early in this process of, of shifting that look. You know, I'll just bring up biology is another area. We've seen so much planning into this type of work from our biology teachers, that one of the practices that's really deeply embedded now is they use something called an ISN, it's an interactive student notebook. So every one of our students in our biology classes has a notebook, and it's structured a certain way, so that on one side of the page, they're reflecting on certain processes, on another side of the page, they're constantly responding to the essential questions in the units and using daily lessons to be able to keep evolving in their thinking around those essential questions. So, you know, there's a lot of work in how we're progressing, how to sort of summarize that, how to say that it's systematic, you know, we're not there yet.
Can I just ask you something about something you said? I'm sorry, David, you, you mentioned something that just struck a chord in me, that you're dealing with courses at the high school level that are traditionally, like AP courses and Regents courses, and that have traditional summative assessments that are really important for college acceptance, et cetera, et cetera. So how, how do you move that, that, that practice in those kinds of classes with those, with teachers who have been teaching in that format for a long time, right, to begin to develop a different way to assess kids, that, but at the same time, maintaining the fidelity that's required to get to the Regents, right, because there's a balance that is really difficult?
Right. I, I mean, I'll go back to, I think Raina pointed it out, it's through the work of our unit planners, and it's really now the focus on stage-two. So, you know, I think of College Board, College Board has really been revamping curriculum. I think of our, you know, the, the next-gen science standards, it's the work that we're doing with our teachers to understand how these standards are changing, you know, in social studies, they've been so focused, so College Board calls them historical thinking skills, and, you know, for the Regents, you know, we're, we're calling them social study skills. So it's targeting, you know, different ways to look at how students are progressing. So they may be working in different units within the curriculum, but they're looking at it through the same skill lenses, so that we can really see how students are progressing over time.
Nice. Bless you.
All right. Moving on?
Moving on.
Woo, okay.
I want to note that we're at slide 15 of 23.
Okay, so this slide is just, just an acknowledgement, that while the state assessments are certainly not the end-all and be-all, and, and certainly are riddled with issues now, especially with the numbers of students taking them, I, I would say, while it is not, you know, the most helpful data, it certainly is data that we use, looking at AP, looking at Regents, AP exams, all of the buildings do some work around the standardized tests with some item analysis, benchmark analysis, scoring discussions, course analysis. So, so the standardized assessments are alive and well, but I think we acknowledge and know that there's a need, that we need to be, have more other ways of measuring our students besides the standardized assessments. So now I want to switch to, so where are we going and what's that vision that we've talked a little bit about moving forward? We're very, as you can hear, we're very proud of our work, and we see that these next steps are, are the, is the essential next layer as we build this delicious strawberry shortcake, right? So we're, like, we're there, we have that first layer of cake, but now we're really, we're ready for, we have some filling, we're ready for the next layer. Next layer, authentic assessment, we want to make sure that we're providing opportunities to assess students in lots of different ways, so that there isn't one way that we're looking to measure kids, because the reality is, not all kids perform the same way on all types of assessment, and if we don't have a diverse set of opportunities for kids, then we're dis servicing kids at that point. So definitely the conversation is alive and well in all of our schools around the different ways to consider assessment, and I would hope that you've seen some examples of these, and we'll continue to see these, this as an area of focus and growth. One of the pieces that has also been a huge shift for us is a real focus on self-assessment, and we just changed in the- And we just changed in the new report card that will be coming out soon, like tomorrow? Twenty-eight? Okay. On the 28th. On the elementary report card, we have always had behaviors that promote learning, and this year, we have also added habits of mind. And part of that is kids being able to look at themselves as learners. And so, this is a short clip that we thought, set the stage for where we really see our growth and goals over these next few years.
Assessment capable student came out of the discussion that I had many years ago with Paul Black, who wrote the Black Will of Paper and the, inside the black box many years ago. And he warned me and said, "Be careful. A lot of that formative evaluation, formative assessment, summative assessment stuff will fail." And he said, "It will fail because, as teachers and systems understand the formative power of using assessments, they'll start to make everything forward." And I, I've heard no child left behind be caught forward in a assessment. It's not. It's summative. And there's nothing wrong with summative. The distinction is the, Bob Stay had this great line where he said, "When the cook tastes the soup, it's forward. When the guest tastes the soup, it's summative." And it's a really great story, because both sides, you want that soup to be good. But on the one hand, you're still making it; on the other hand, you're serving it. The same kind of notion at schools. And so, we went back to New Zealand at the time, and we started saying, "We like this stuff about formative, but we know it's going to fail." And so, we got together and worked out this notion of student assessment capabilities. And the argument is that if we teach the students how to evaluate their own learning, that's what the key of formative assessment is. And of course, if you're going to teach the students that, the teachers have to know to teach the students that. So, you get that double virtuous circle without all that language that goes with formative versus summative. And students need to know, as they're going through their learning, how to use assessment to improve their learning. Plus, they also have to know to use assessment to know if they've reached the six-foot bar or whatever it is they're trying to achieve, summative side of things. And so, this is the kind of notion that we're looking at. Now, self-regulated learning, in some ways, is kind of like that, but it asks for more. It asks for more than just evaluating. A lot of the self-regulated work also asks students to know how to learn, what to do when they don't know what to do. So, that's a bigger ask. So, I see self-assessment capable learners as a key part, but it isn't the only part. There is a lot more of the self-regulation notion. And I struggle with a lot of those words. If you think of self, self-regulation, meta-compression, life model learning, 21st century schools, assessment capable students, I think there's an easier way of saying it, when students see themselves as their own teachers. And that's probably the better way I'm looking at it. It's a lot easier.
So, we share that, because we want to ensure that there is more and more, that there's more and more opportunities for kids to have ownership of their learning. And we know that that's ultimately, it's ultimately the key. I mean, if we want to send our kids off to college or life beyond Irvington High School, they really do need to take ownership, and they need to not look for teachers to open their heads and pour in the information, but they need to be part of the learning and engage in the learning. Well, if that's going to happen, we need to design the learning for that. It's not going to happen magically. So, as a, as an administrative team, we've worked really hard to continue to build our own capacity around this work, as well as raise the level of expectation around these kinds, this kind of learning. So, early, in the earlier video, Lynda Drolle-Hammond talked about performance tasks, moving to more of a performance-based approach. Again, it doesn't mean you don't do all that other type of assessment. It doesn't mean you eliminate summative assessment. So, when we talk about balanced or maybe comprehensive, what we're saying is it needs to include and reflect many components. The second bullet in particular, where it says, "Performance tasks lend themselves to interdisciplinary connections," that is, we know that now. It is at the key of really strong, well-designed instruction that teaches for transfer. We have to teach kids that what they're learning goes beyond that moment in time and that subject area, so that they can make those connections. So, performance tasks have some key characteristics that we can work with and will work with our teachers to develop through stage-two assessment. So, through the unit planner, every time a teacher creates an assessment, they actually have a way to label it. What kind of an assessment is it? What standards is it meeting? So, over time, what will be in stage-two will be series of assessments, all labeled, so we can see, "How many performance assessments are we giving to kids over the, through sixth grade, if we looked at all of the sixth-grade courses? Wow, it turns out we're doing performance assessment in every class. Oh, wait a minute, we're doing a ton of performance-based assessment in science. Hmm, not so much in social studies. Let's talk about why not." So, that's how we continue to build the value and capacity of Rubicon Atlas through stage-two. So, the next level of work that we have started to do is, in addition to the examples that we shared with you tonight, in addition to the work of stage-one and stage-two of our unit planner, is we are trying to create a culture of data. And we have started with our instructional leaders. So, each month, we have about 25, between 25 and 30 of us, that meet for an hour a month, and these are the instructional leaders. So, it's all of us. It's the K-5 grade-level chairs, as well as the department chairs. And over the years, we've focused and talked about different topics and subjects. But this year, we really felt, knowing that assessment is our focus, we really felt that it was important to start to build the capacity of our instructional, of us as instructional leaders and the teachers who are instructional leaders around data. And so, every instructional leader is, is taking on a data project. And that data project is something that they've, they are designing and they are selecting for themselves. And it is something that they want to learn more about, because a good data project stems from a good question or being curious about something, something that you want to know more about. So, what we, we are at the point of naming our projects, and what we're seeing is, and people could start from wherever they wanted to around their topic. And what we noticed, as we started to see people's, different people's data projects, is they're falling into some key categories. So, the data projects are falling under some programmatic, placement, achievement, I'm going to come back to this in a second, process and approach, and curriculum and instruction. So, I just gave you some topics that have been identified by our instructional leaders. So, one of the interesting ones is, one of our instructional leaders at Dowslane is actually looking at the Ames Web data as it relates to the, to foundations and the Fanta-Simpinell Diagnostic Reading Assessment. So, she's wondering if I'm doing a running record for kids about, as readers, how, where is my, where is this student as a reader? How does that relate to my foundations and data and information? And where does that correlate to my Ames Web data? So, already, we have teachers asking those questions, like, "Wait, we're giving this, and I'm doing that, and wait, how do all of these pieces fit together so that I understand this, each of my students a little bit more deeply and through a lot of different lenses?" So, that's a really good example. We're also, we have people, we have an instructional leader, several, who are looking at placement, whether that be placement into math classes, honors, AP. Where, how are we correlating honors data? How does honors data correlate with grade, with course grades? How does AP scores correlate with course grades? What do we see? What kind of comparisons can we make? Achievement? What are predictors of success? We have different instructional leaders who are looking at, if this is what we see a student's level of achievement, how, what aspects of that course or grade actually are, can correlate to predictors of success? So, they're studying the current exam, how kids are doing, and then they'll also look at some of the summative assessments that happen at the end of the year. Process and approach, the relationship between, so we have several professional, we have our, some of our coaches. Relationship between professional learning and effective instructional planning. How do I know, if I'm working with a teacher, how do I know that, how I'm coaching that teacher? Or, as an administrator, how I'm coaching that teacher? Is that translating into practice? A relationship between attendance data and interventions through RTI? So, what do we notice about maybe kids who aren't in school as much as other kids? Is there some correlation between attendance and, and students who, who are requiring higher levels of intervention? Again, curriculum and instruction, looking at classroom practice, and how much time we're allotting to each part of the math, of, if math is a 60-minute block, how much time are we allotting to each aspect of the math module? And what do we see about the effectiveness of how kids perform? So, again, looking at curriculum and instruction through the lens of how kids are doing. Constructed response analysis. We have one department chair who's actually going to be doing a more qualitative, looking at the constructed response and analyzing those questions, and again, how the kids perform. So, these are just a few examples of where we're going, but every, every instructional leader is really looking at something that's of interest to them, but they can also inform our practice as leaders. David?
So, this work, super important work, will it lead to the, the culture of using the data to inform what a problem of practice might be at any given, one of the given four schools with teachers? And then, then targeting from a district level, the professional development plan that we've been talking about and sort of drawing that correlation?
So, yes, eventually. So, yes, that is always the goal, right? The goal is to identify, look at my practice or look at our practices, understand how that data's informing that practice, ultimately, figure out where I need to go, what is the problem of practice, and do I even need professional learning? So, I want to be careful here. Not always, you don't always need professional learning. Sometimes, it's just simply acknowledging, like, "Oh, this is what this data is saying to me. I need to just shift in my, I, I'm ready. I'm ready to shift in my practice." That's why the formative assessment is so critical to this work, right? What we don't want to do is, we want to move away, especially at the secondary level, of living where it's all summative. That unit ends, I took that assessment, I got a 75, I got an 80, I got a 90. What does it mean? And how does that inform? So, yes, Dave, I guess what I just want to be careful with is that not everything follows the same path, but we want to be flexible enough in our thinking that we know the path we need. Is it programmatic? Or is it really a moment in time for what it's, what a child needs, a student needs? So, so with that, what you can see is, our approach is multi-leveled, and I guess I would say, from my own belief system, about how do you make change? Change takes, people like to say, "Three to five." That's never true. It's five to seven, and some people would say, "Seven to 10." So, I'm going to stay away from the seven to 10. It gives people anxiety.
I don't want you moving the goalie.
Yeah. So, but it definitely takes time. But what I hope you've learned tonight, and what you're seeing and, and hearing from us as an administrative team, is the level of work that's being done, and it's not just one level, it is multi-level. We are coming at this work in so many different ways. It is reinforced through observation and evaluation. So, as much as I don't talk about that here, it is through that daily work that, that the building administrators and directors are able to then engage in those conversations, because now, they're doing the one-on-work with, one-on-one work with the teacher to say, "Well, how will you know? I'm going to see this lesson. Talk to me about what your assessment is. When we meet for the post-observation, share with me some samples of, of a closure activity or the formative assessment or the exit exam. How did you know what kids knew from that moment in time? Or, if you weren't going to know after that one class, when will you know? And what will that look like?" So, that is the ongoing dialogue, whether it be through observation, evaluation, faculty meetings, grade-level learning sessions. It is the conversation of this district right now. And I just want to say, I can't be more proud of the work that we're doing. And I know it's like, just a moment to say, thank you to our administrative team, because, honestly, we have the most amazing administrative team right now. We've been here a long time, and we've had great administrators come and go, but as a team, the good, effective work we're doing is the result of the individuals who sit in this room tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's anything that I share with people in terms of what I've learned is, over the past few years, watching the team is really remarkable.
It is. So, thank you. So, with that, so what are our goals, right? So, I hope that you've heard the goals throughout this, because it isn't, this shouldn't feel like a summative slide. Hopefully, you've been forming your knowledge and understanding of our work as you've watched and listened to each of the slides. So, our goals are teachers, we have two entry points, right? What are teachers doing? What are students doing? Our teachers are focused on instructional design, alignment of those, stage-one and two, evidence-based decision-making. How do you know? Let's not just use our gut. Our guts are good as teachers, but we need to, we need some correlation. Students, broad range of opportunities to demonstrate learning. There isn't just one way. That ownership, we need to engage our kids to make sure that they want to be part of it. The development of capstone projects. How do we get to a point where we're really naming some culminating opportunities along the way? What are those benchmark moments or capstone moments where we can say, "Okay, you've learned all of this. Let's take it, and now, let's really look at, through performance-based assessment, what really can you show for your learning at this point? How do we know? And how do kids have that individual piece?"
I do have a question on this slide. I know you're like, almost there.
I was.
And we, we watched the video, and then you have the bullet point here.
Yeah.
I have heard from parents about the self-assessment piece and the concern, you know, especially at the secondary level, that the teachers are content experts, they're looking, parents are looking to see, you know, are we getting the feedback on the student work? And sometimes, they're, they're not trusting the idea of the self-assessment. So, I don't know if anybody wants to speak to that.
So, self-assessment doesn't mean that Raina is saying, "I think I'm doing pretty well in that Global One class." That isn't what self-assessment means. Self-assessment means that, as a student in the classroom, I have an opportunity to reflect on my own learning, to understand my own learning, and, and know where I am. That is done through the partnership with the teacher. So, what we're saying is, what we know is, there is way too much knowledge, information for our teachers. They can't cover all the knowledge in the world. So, we need to make sure that kids are beginning to look at their own learning and assess how, how deeply they're understanding what they need to know, based on the goals the teacher has articulated. So, self-assessment is just one piece? So, I don't want to make it sound like we are trying to move our teachers out of the classroom, because kids could do it themselves. What we're saying is that what we want to move from is a teacher saying, "This is right and this is wrong." Because in the end, we want kids to be able to self-assess their own knowledge against the rubric, against what the defined goals are for the project, for the learning, for those outcomes. So, it's not that the student is saying, "This is what I need to know in Global One." What we're saying is, the teacher is defining the, the goals and expectations and the outcomes. And kids are able to be partners with the teacher in measuring their success along the way. And so, I don't know. So, ask another question if that didn't get to it, or if...
That's pretty far along. I'd be curious, you know, what is the, the work with the faculty members to, you know, be effective in that practice?
You know, I think the consistent message we've said is, you know, we're still in the early stages, so we're working on it. So, you know, self-assessment, and I think Raina said it well, but I would just reiterate, you know, it's not just turning over assessment to the hands of students, whether it's peer assessment or self-assessment, there's a purpose in it. So, I think, you know, I spoke into it before when I talked about, you know, the world language process in the classroom that I was in. It's being able to help students identify their, their goals, their targeted goals of how they, they see themselves moving forward. It's the ability, not only for a teacher to provide feedback, but for students to provide feedback. If I'm able to give David feedback on a process, not only is he benefiting from it, but I'm becoming more of an expert in what that process is about, so it's going to inform my learning as well. And then, I can reflect over time as I get more pieces of feedback. So, when I'm ready for that next level of summative assessment with the teacher, I'm much more prepared.
Yeah. So, I just, the, the thing I want to focus in is, how are we helping teachers to do that, to support students in achieving that?
Through instructional design.
Yeah.
Right? So, it's through that instructional design model that, where, is where we go with that. So, if I have a stage-one planner, and I have all of the knowledge, skill, and the transfer that I'm looking to develop in that student during that unit, then through my assessment process, there's an expectation that we're decide, that we're designing some of our assessments to be self. And I just want to be careful here, because self-assessment is not always, it's not self-assessment of, "How much do I know?" Self-assessment is the reflection process. So, it's understanding it in the context of what I need to know. Self-assessment is being able to, is able, being able to read a text and understand and walk away and say, "What do I know and understand about that text?" And then, engage in dialogue with a partner and sort of say, "Wow, I got that. I didn't get that." So, I want to... get that. So I want to be careful. Self-assessment doesn't mean I say, I get an A and you get a C.
Yeah. So I think that's really important.
I'm sorry, because I just want to, I actually feel like you've done a great job explaining the value of self-assessment and peer, to peer support. I'm asking how are we helping teachers, because this is a new practice, to be effective in that practice?
So I want to go back to something that Raina said a minute ago, talking about the observation and evaluation process. A lot of times, we ask students to engage in self-assessment or reflection. I really think reflection is where I go here. Self-assessment is an example of transfer, in many ways, an example of students developing their thinking to the point where they can actually reflect on their process. So I'm thinking, for instance, about an observa, literally a meeting that I had today in a post-observation conference where we were talking about some of the reflection that students had to do as part of an ongoing task. And the reflection wasn't, I got the answer right or I got the answer wrong, or even that I wrote a good essay or not such a good essay. The, where we were going, where I was going with the teacher, we were kind of dialoguing about was, how do I build students' strategies around assessing the way in which they use the feedback that they were given along the way? Right? So how does my finished product reflect the thinking that developed as a product of our work together, as me as student and you as teacher, for instance? Right? That self-assessment to me in its highest form, it's reflection upon my own process as a learner and as a thinker, and I can point to where I've developed from point A to point B in terms of the final product that I've presented to you. That was kind of a, you know, an aha moment for us. So I, the reason I bring that up is because that's an example of how I think, you know, you can do that work in a really relevant way because it's relevant to the task at hand and it provides in a model to scale to other experiences for students along the way.
Can I, can I piggyback on that question, Mike?
I feel like it hasn't been answered. Did I miss the answer? I'm just, I'm asking, what do we do PD-wise to make sure that teachers understand?
That is PD.
Yeah.
That's PD.
You're working with the teachers directly, is that what?
Absolutely. That is professional learning.
So that we talk about, like when we talk about the use of...
So principals working with...
Principals working with individuals, absolutely. And then there's other layers of it that do occur through other processes.
And I'm happy for you to push us because if it's not clear to you, then it may not be clear to other people. So where...
So it's in the observation process that you're having this as part of the dialogue with faculty members?
That is, that's one avenue. And I think it's a particularly powerful one because it speaks directly to a teacher's work. It's not, it's not a whole group exercise where we talk about reflection and the value of reflection or the value of self-assessment, or even a strategy for that, which is valuable. And we will do that in a faculty meeting or we'll do that in another venue. But to me, where it moves the needle is when you're doing it with an individual and their work that they can look at and they can say, wow, I can see where I'd make that adjustment. And that would change this from, from me being the keeper of the knowledge or the raider of the work to the student having a deeper role of thinking. I'm still grading the work, I'm still, I'm still ultimately holding it up against the rubric and saying, you know, here's where it does or doesn't meet the standards and here's where it needs to be better and here's what I would recommend. All right? But shifting that role of, you know, I guess in some ways self-actualization to the student and actually saying, this is, you know, this is how I'm using the learning that I'm gaining to better myself as a learner. But that's, but back to your question, it's, that one-on-one work is, to me, a critical way in which that happens. Right?
I want to, I'm going to re-ask your question a little more specifically.
Yeah, thanks.
So highly effective, there's a lot of highly effective teachers in Irvington, right? We're very proud of that fact, it's awesome. So is there, is the possibility to incorporate, or is it being incorporated now with these highly effective teachers in that 3D area, right, where it specifically says, students self-assess and monitor their own progress, right? So if that's happening in a classroom, that's one of the characteristics of a highly effective teacher. Since we have a lot of highly effective teachers, are we, are we or can we leverage them in the professional development process to work with teachers who are less developed in that area and so forth?
Yeah. I guess I just want to back up though for a second. You know, sometimes, and who believes in professional learning more than me, but sometimes, it's not that a teacher has to go somewhere and learn it. So I think that the power of what David is describing around this observation process, there is something to be said for engaging in that kind of dialogue. So yes, I would say, I know Chris just said, grade level learning sessions, department double period meetings at the high school. It is all PD, it is all the dialogue. So if we have clarity around our goals, it is the goals that are driving the work in all of the buildings. So even when we're talking, I'm going to loop this all the way back to earlier when we talked about RTI or interventions or, all of those pieces connect because it's all about curriculum, instruction and assessment. That's the living triangle. So everything, we never talk about those really in isolation because you really can't. So I think sometimes there's a point where you recognize, well, wait a minute, I think our teachers need, they don't know how to do this. And that's where you would want it to surface, right? So if David and Allison said, you know, here's what I'm noticing, through my observation and evaluation process, I see that people are not really, don't really have the rubrics or the rubrics that are aligned with that unit and therefore they're struggling to design the assessment for that unit. Well, that's where now, maybe through a sixth grade learning session or a seventh grade learning session, maybe they would take that on. I know Deb and Andrea, you're getting ready to do some work around rubric development with the kindergarten teachers, I want to say that I saw that. So that's where that happens. It's not big and global, it's what are we identifying in our day-to-day work, which very often can vary with where David just said, teacher by teacher. So how does an individual teacher help maybe a group of teachers because they have that skill set? Or what we're really also seeing is Nancy Deacon especially, our ELA coach or Sarah Rust, our secondary coach, is identifying it. So she's now coming in and each of them, they're helping teachers to design assessment as well. So that's where it happens. It's very, it's formative and then it's responsive.
Okay. No, I get, that's what I was looking for, thank you.
Great. Sorry, sorry it took me so long to get there.
I have one question to add, which is more about a term that you've used throughout the presentation and perhaps I missed, I missed its broad definition, but the word rubric in this, so it's in a lot of slides and I'm not sure if it's always being used the same way. Can you...
Yeah. That's such a good point. And I'm going to say it's actually not always used the same way, which is a challenge. So a rubric is, it's usually, people will call something, sometimes it's actually just a checklist, sometimes people call that a rubric. That is not, when we talk about rubric, we talk about it as a tool that measures a student's growth in a particular area through some sort of a measured, scaffolded approach. So it will say, if, let's say it's a four-point rubric, I'll call it that. Or if you maybe think about, no, I don't want to use that because that's a very bad example. So if we think about, let's say, voice in writing. So there's something called the six plus one writing rubric, where it actually is a chart and it literally states at a level one, two, three and four, this is what the performance of a student looks like. So if I am writing a piece, my personal narrative, and I have a lot of voice in my writing, I am pretty sophisticated as a writer, I might be scoring a level four. But Carol, she's a little early in her development and so she, she's more about the facts. She doesn't really have as much voice in what she shares, she gives you the numbers. So Carol, if, but it's defined through the rubric. So in other words, rather than Raina saying as the teacher, this is how I think Carol is and this is how I think Chris is and this is where I think Michael is, you actually are using a document that states what it looks like. So a level four is, has X number of details in the writing that uses voice or, so it names it really specifically what you should be looking for. And then the expectation is, the teacher or in observation and evaluation, we are looking at the definition of what a four is and we are scoring it based on the, a common understanding of what it means to be a four, a three, a two or a one. Sometimes though, we, you will hear people call something a rubric when it actually is just a numbered system and doesn't have that full level of descriptor. And that's a flawed use of the term, is what I would say to you. So we like to say that it is a product that uses descriptors to equate to some sort of a numbering or naming system.
So you have evidence.
You have evidence. And it's common across, at minimum, all of my 20 students or my 100 students, so I'm looking at all the kids the same way. And in the best-case scenario, we're using that common rubric across a whole grade. So we're looking at all fifth graders in this particular writing piece across the common rubric. And then maybe perfect world is that everyone in the whole sixth, seventh and eighth grade is using the common writing rubric.
Thank you.
So, next though.
You thought you were so close and then another 10 minutes went by.
I was. In conclusion, two hours later, but two good hours, I hope. So moving forward. So I hope that you have heard what our work is. I think that moving forward, we've talked about it. We're continuing to increase our use of data, we're developing our programs through this idea of using data and assessment. We're looking, the budgetary priorities to be informed through evidence-based recommendations. So we want to make sure that where we're suggesting that we're going and where we're moving is based on what we know with the needs of our classrooms. So with that, I didn't even create a Q and A slide because I knew you were going to ask all your questions throughout.
I think that worked off for us to be able to hit them along the way.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then I just wanted to say...
Thank you, thank you for your good questions tonight, too.
Wonderful presentation. Yeah. And I was just going to say maybe to Dave's point, so appropriately, Raina, you gave accolades to our colleagues in the administrative team. But we have to also step back and acknowledge what your role in leadership is in all of this work, which is really, really incredible. So thank you.
Very powerful. Thank you.
Thank you all.
And I think that's you all, good night.
So I want to do, I want to do two pieces. Do you have a question related to the presentation? If not, I want to let them be able to go and then we're happy to have.
I, actually, there is one.
Related to the question? Okay.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Teaser.
Good evening.
Just for consistency, you know this, but if you could share your name and then we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes.
Yes, good evening. My name is Yesen Asareal and I have a question with regards to world language program. And it pertains to the slide where you mentioned you didn't want to give us any more details, which I understand you've still working on it. But I wanted to understand where are the benchmarks? If you're, for example, looking at the American Council of Teaching of Foreign Languages, for example, as parameters, what should be, you know, the level that we would like the kids to reach? Not just that, you know, you were mentioning, of course, speaking is the most important thing right now, which is definitely a positive move. However, we also want to, for example, know that, for example, phonetically, they're having good accents. I mean, there are many different aspects of how we can measure the level of the, you know, knowledge of the language. So I wanted to just ask you, what are the benchmarks? Where did you, you know, where did you take them? Are they somewhere specifically, like located from different education or...
So we're using ACTFOL and we're using the Apple assessment as, there are two standardized, pretty commonly used standardized assessments, the Apple and for the life of me, I can't remember. We looked at it when we first decided, we're making decisions. So I can't remember what the second one was. So through the support of our world language consultant, who is, works all over the world actually, we had lots of conversation about how do we measure this and what are going to be those benchmarks? And then how do we infuse those benchmarks, by the way, into our curriculum and instruction? So that's where we are right now. So I can't tell you that we're this far along and I just want to comment on something you said because I want to make sure everybody heard this. Speaking and listening is, there's no question around the goals, but we at no time don't want to also address the other aspects of learning a language. So certainly at our highest levels, our AP courses, I mean, there's lots of literature and other approaches and other implementation and infusion of language. But the reality is that we were spending so much time on our vocabulary and grammar that students knew and understood that but could not speak the language at all. As we continue to develop the proficiency, it is going to allow us to then look in and say, what else do we need to be doing? But first and foremost, this is our approach. I don't know if that helps.
Okay. Thank you. And just another question, with regards to checkpoint A and checkpoint B that also was raised previously, is there any way that kids who have a higher level of knowledge can be accommodated by, for example, attending classes of a higher grade? I'm just wondering because if, there could be differences, of course.
So I'm going to say something that I'm probably, I'm not going to look at, I'm not going to look maybe at Dave Cone right now or David Sotia. So I'm going to say that we have had conversations and this is a slippery slope when you, when you put something like this out there.
I think also you just have to briefly mention checkpoint A.
What, checkpoint A and checkpoint B?
Checkpoint A and B are just the standardized assessments. So there was a time when New York State developed the assessments for world language and then I think they decided that it was too expensive and so they said, you have to do it now? I know that's a familiar song. And so we had to develop our summative, they're really the summative assessments that we use for world language, for our world language program. I guess we barely talk about them because they've become almost rudiment, like we need to do it, but honestly, this is the power of the work because this is really where we're going to see the growth and change in our program and what kids actually know and are able to do. But one of the conversations that we've started to have, but it's complex, is having kids move through our system based on their level of proficiency rather than, I'm in seventh grade or I'm in eighth grade or I'm in 10th grade, for all the things that we know. Certainly we have kids who come from homes where there are multiple languages spoken, so their level of proficiency right off the bat may be higher. We have kids that are stronger, they're just stronger in language. They enjoy it and their level of growth far exceeds other students. It doesn't mean there's anything wrong with the other students, but we know that, we see students move at that pace. We have started those conversations about the complexity. We actually played around for a few hours maybe with the idea of renaming eventually our courses around proficiency so that a kid doesn't go into a proficiency into a course because I'm in ninth grade. They go in because that, of their level of proficiency.
And that makes sense.
And of course it makes sense. So I want you to know, like, these are the conversations we're having and we deeply believe in it, but I also need you to hear that this is complex. It's complex about talking about, then how do kids move through years of language? How do we give kids credit? And I know that that may seem like the mundane and we don't want to get caught in that, but there are realities of what we have to provide for students and what we have to report to hand a student a diploma to graduate from our schools. So as much as we want to be deep in this, like what we believe, we have to marry what we believe with what the state demands as a requirement for graduation or what we're giving a student for their college, as they're looking to go to college, what will their transcripts say? And so we're playing with these ideas in our head because we deeply believe, I think, what you believe. But we're not there yet, but we feel like we've taken some really good first steps to meeting what I think is a common goal in this district. So we're excited.
That's great, thank you. Thank you very much. And just one thing, I'm very sorry, I know, this is on behalf of Erin, she couldn't be here with us tonight, she had to go to Wake. But I have a, just a quick question with regards to...
Do you think we need our staff? I just don't want to keep them any longer.
Oh, this is very quick, really, I promise. This is just with regards to her question two weeks ago into the strategic plan. And is it a definite response to our request for early phone calls to be worked through with some new input? Thank you.
So December 19th would be an update to the strategic plan where we begin to outline some strategic next steps. I can tell you that world language at the elementary level is a part of that presentation that I'm in the process of building right now with my team. And I would say, I wouldn't go as far as saying that it's a response to any particular community or group, but it's a part, it's our process. And we're looking at building capacity in what we're offering in the school district, but we're also looking at our ability to be able to handle and deliver programs. When Raina spoke about the work that's been ongoing, the one thing that resonated with me so much, and I hope everyone heard it, was fidelity. So if we want to do something, we want to do it well. So there is an ongoing conversation there. I'm not going to totally tip my cap and tell you exactly what we're thinking because there's pieces of it, I got to be honest with you, we're still working through to inform what I will present on the 19th. But I can tell you that elementary world language will be a part of that presentation and it is a part of our plans for the future. Certainly, I think it will align with some of what... Certainly, I think it will align with some of what you and some other community members are looking for, but really, I want to tell you sincerely, it's an outgrowth of this whole body of work that we've been talking about, and it's not just tonight, it's been the conversation that we've been having for five and a half years.
Well, thank you very much for listening to us and taking some steps. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you very much. Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
We have one agenda item.
Yes. So, going through the rest of our agenda.
A second.
Could I, it is a, we're not even calling it a consent agenda, are we?